Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Special Meeting for Wednesday, November 20, 2019. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll.
Carolyn, here.
Evans?
Here.
Kerner?
Here.
Burzow?
Here.
Alstead?
Here.
Special?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The main purpose of this meeting is to open up any and all bids for the Smith Elementary School proposed sale. And so I'll call upon Executive Director of Business Services Sue Schnorr to come and open up the sealed envelope.
I got one bid.
I shouldn't have let her open it.
Get this in suspense here.
Didn't want to open it ahead of time.
No, we didn't do that.
We've got one bid for the Hess for $400,000.
Is there anything else in the letter that would be relevant to that? That we can share at this time? Probably not. I probably asked an inappropriate question.
Oh, no. Just, yeah. No, there's, well, I haven't read the whole thing, but I will go make copies for the board for the closed session and...
Okay. And under Wisconsin statute, the board is permitted to go into executive session for the purpose of purchase and sale of property, among other things. And so we will have an executive session this evening following the regular board meeting, which starts at 6:00 PM. And during that executive session, we will be addressing this particular bid. So I thank you for, everyone, for coming early tonight for this bid opening, for this special meeting. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Kerner?
Aye.
Burzow?
Aye.
Alstead?
Aye.
Special?
Aye.
Sallaji?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, we are adjourned from the special meeting, and at 6:00 PM, we will go into open session for our regular board meeting of November 20th. Thank you.
The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GOV-TV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GOV-TV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GOV-TV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Wednesday, November 20, 2019. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Would you please call the roll.
Carolyn?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Kerner?
Here.
Burzow?
Here.
Alstead?
Here.
Special?
Here.
Sallaji?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Our next item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're delighted to have with us Merrill Elementary School student Adriana Clark to lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adriana, we're delighted that you've joined us tonight because the reason we're here is for students, for children. And so it's always important for us to have a student, at least one student, and you were kind enough to come out tonight with your mother and your brother. And so we want to thank you for taking time out of your schedule to join us and lead us in the pledge. We think it's very important that you were here tonight. So thank you for coming. And if you have to go, we understand, but if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we're also going.
Thank you.
Every board meeting is special, but tonight we have two presentations that make this extra special and things that typically are not on our agenda. Our first special recognition tonight is for a Scholar-Athlete, Spectrum Communications Awards and a monthly Student-Athlete of the Month Award. And we are so thrilled that we have a student among us who has earned this award, who excels in the classroom and in extracurriculars and in the community. And so to make this presentation, I would like to introduce Senator Dan Fine and Adam Reschka from Spectrum News.
Reschka?
And the student to be honored tonight is Danielle Liebly, who is here with her parents, Sean and Debbie. So please, please join the senator for this wonderful recognition.
Well, thanks for having us this evening. It's an honor to be here to recognize Danielle Liebly. I met her a little bit ago and got to know her. She's a very accomplished young woman. She's darn near a 4.0 GPA, which is very, very good amongst that. She's also very involved out in the community in a lot of different activities. She's involved in the choir and also a very, very good swimmer. She's been a Varsity Letter winner for four years. It's something to be very proud of. And you've also just been selected the Spectrum Scholar-Athlete of the Month, which comes with a $1,000 scholarship. So I'm very proud to be here to give you this presentation, recognizing you for all your efforts in the community, in the classroom, and in the sporting events as well. So congratulations on behalf of Spectrum and myself and the Oshkosh Area School District. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We will have school board president come and we'll do the official presentation.
Danielle, thank you so much for joining us and for being such a wonderful role model for athletes and students across our school district.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Danielle. You are what people should look up to be as a Scholar-Athlete. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Danielle, I know that all of our board members would be very honored to shake your hand and congratulate you.
student, but also the parents, the family, and other significant people in a young person's life. So I want to also call out Sean Liebly and Debbie, her parents, because your support for her over the years is certainly impressive and we appreciate, we appreciate all you've done to support your daughter and other students in our district through Girl Scouting and in a variety of ways. So thank you for all you've done to make sure that Danielle is on the right track here and is doing such an outstanding job for herself, her family, and her school and her community. So thank you.
I'll just tell you, back in 2000, we were looking around to finally settle. And Debbie's from southern Wisconsin and I'm from Anacola. And what it came down to was the school district of Oshkosh that brought us here.
Wow.
And it has been a big reward for our whole family.
That's very kind of you. Gives me goosebumps.
Yeah, I just got goosebumps.
You know, it's a cool thing.
It is, it is. And I believe there's someone else who's been a big supporter. Danielle's here.
Coach Wayne.
Yes.
I have her as a coach and teacher.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for taking time out of your day to be here, but more importantly, to support her each and every day and her successes in the classroom and in the athletic realm. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Cal is an honors English teacher in the Global Academy at Oshkosh West. So she has had Danielle for her second year academy level two. And then she's also been Danielle's swim coach for all four years of Danielle swimming times. So she's a huge part of our family. She has taken on a lot of Lieblys. So we appreciate her. Sometimes she doesn't get paid enough.
We hear you.
Yeah, you had big shoes to fill when my son, my oldest, had you his first year. And that was, or his last year was, yeah, his last year in swimming. Yeah, that was some big shoes to fill, and you've been doing a great job.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, again, congratulations to Danielle and to her parents and her coach and the West High community for supporting her and the honors that she's brought to Oshkosh West in so many ways. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second special recognition tonight is for, also a Spectrum Award. This is for the Spectrum Award for Merit in School Communication. We are so pleased tonight to be honoring one of our own staff members because the Oshkosh Area School District was recently honored by the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association, WSPPRA, also known as WISPRA, a professional association representing schools, school districts, education associations, consulting agencies, and organizations with a Spectrum Award of Merit for its work in school communications. Spectrum Awards recognize high-quality public relations efforts produced by or on behalf of Wisconsin school districts. This year, this statewide competition honored 47 school districts with awards. The Oshkosh Area School District earned an award of merit for its internal branding efforts. In the 2018-2019 school year, the Oshkosh Area School District implemented branded internal templates to bring consistency to district content and to elevate the professionalism and appearance of its material and its messaging. The district continues to prioritize its communication efforts in order to engage stakeholders and build community through education. It wasn't that long ago, and it is the result of strategic planning in the district, that commitment was made to hire a full-time communications director. And so we are just so pleased to be able to accept this award for, on behalf of the school district. But tonight, we're especially recognizing Katie Neiman, who has filled the role of communications director for the district in her continued diligent and tireless work in communications for the Oshkosh Area School District. Katie truly has been an asset to this district, and we greatly appreciate all of the professional pieces that she creates, both for internal and external stakeholders. So Katie, on behalf of the board, we commend you and thank you for your continued efforts to get our message out to the public.
Thank you very much.
And we would like to present you with a certificate. Actually, there are two. This is the official award from the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association, also known as WISPRA. And also then, we have a special certificate just for Katie herself. And special recognition for all of her tireless work on behalf of our district and getting our messages out to the various public. So Katie, thank you so much for all you do for the district. And I believe there are seven other people here who would like to congratulate you as well.
First off, I just want to say, obviously, I appreciate the recognition from our state organization as well as the board. The award itself really connects to everything that we're doing with our communication plan and strategic plan, and it wouldn't be possible without the engagement and support from all of our employees who are kind of lifting up the communication efforts as well. So greatly appreciate that, all of us. Thank you.
I have been known to say that you can't have enough good communication, good chocolate, and good professional development, and this is a good example of the fact that we have good communication and will continue to seek ways to make it even, even better than it already is. All right, with that, we will move on to board and administrative reports. Next agenda item is the board president report. I continue to be so impressed with the work of our staff and our students in so many ways, in the community and in the schools. I recently had an opportunity to attend an Empty Bowls event at City Center atrium. This raises money for community food pantries in the area, and I was so impressed with all of the students who were there to serve and to participate and to raise money for those food pantries. So I want to commend all of the students and staff members who were present that night. Also, I want to commend the schools who invited veterans and families in to pay tribute to them on Veterans Day, November 15th. It's so important that we recognize and we pay tribute to those who have stepped up and assumed the uniforms of this country to ensure the safety and security and the rights and privileges that all of us enjoy. On November 19th, there was a, an award-winning play at Oshkosh West High School, very well done, and a variety show with lots of students participating and sharing their talents in front of a very receptive audience. Very, very, very much fun. There was an Oakwood concert last night at the Alberta Kimball Auditorium for grade K through 2, and there was a lot of excitement in the audience. I don't know if those children had a lot of chocolate or candy before they went on stage, but the energy level was just fantastic. There was also a band concert last night at Webster Stanley Middle School. We have a new band director there this year, and he and the students did an outstanding job. And finally, I want to thank Mr. Zangle and Mrs. Kerner for arranging for me to read to four second graders on Monday morning. That was a fun experience, and it was only the result of my passing the criminal background check that I was allowed in there because all, all volunteers have to do that, and even the president of the school board must be checked out, so.
Especially the president.
Yeah.
Probably especially.
And that saved us a lot of money for having to do that.
I really appreciate the vote of confidence of my board members tonight. So I want to just thank all of the teachers and students for the many successful things going on each and every day in our classrooms. And I would just say, keep up the good work. And as we have a holiday coming up, to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable holiday season. So with that, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harazok. We have so much more to celebrate, and I'm very pleased to go ahead and give you my first report for tonight. It's actually of the first Lego League success. So six teams from our district recently competed at the Lake Shore First Lego League Regional in Cleveland, Wisconsin. The students took on the challenge of building a better world. Many of the teams will advance the sectionals and received awards for their teamwork, innovation, programming, and more. Congratulations to our teams from Carl Traeger, Merrill, Oaklawn, and Oakwood Elementary Schools, as well as Carl Traeger, Alps Charter, Perry Tipler, and South Park Middle Schools. Oakwood Elementary School Eagles and the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh Titan athletes are making strong, positive connections with each other through the Titans and Eagles Active Mentoring, otherwise known as TEAM program. Titan student athletes come to Oakwood to volunteer with students in different ways. They are able to volunteer at recess, lunch, or in the classroom. There are currently 40 athletes participating in the program with new people signing up each and every day. Kindergartners at Oakwood Elementary School have been learning about gratitude, and one student's gratitude caught the attention of a local news station. Deacon was working with his teacher and shared how much he appreciates Chief Meteorologist Steve Bellon. With the help of his teacher, Deacon carefully crafted a letter and video which spread to Facebook and resulted in a personal response from WBAY. After receiving the letter and hearing about Deacon's story, Mr. Bellon is planning to visit Oaklawn Elementary School. Great work, Deacon. Thank you for sharing your gratefulness. Many student athletes at Oshkosh West have recently been recognized for their accomplishments. A special congratulations to the following Wildcats. Ryan Moon, a junior at West, qualified for the Special Olympic State Bowling Competition. West cross-country runners John Thill and Taylor Guido qualified for the WIAA State Cross-Country Meet. And six West girls golfers were selected as academic all-state honorees. Congratulations, McKenna Lloyd, Sage Weisenberg, Jensen Musa, Kennedy Benish, Elise Benish, and Hannah Eaton. Crystal Chan, Oshkosh native and author of the award-winning book Bird, recently visited Carl Traeger Middle School. She inspired students to listen to their inner voice and follow their dreams despite any obstacles in their way. Classroom teachers at Roosevelt Elementary School recently gave families ideas for helping their children grow in reading engagement, word-solving, comprehension, and math workplaces. During the school's recent family night, the school community was able to enjoy dinner together and practice reading and math skills. Jefferson Elementary School students were among the many Oshkosh students that were able to participate in the K through 12 citywide art show at the Masonic Center. Additionally, Jefferson Elementary School recently hosted a Title I Science, Technology, Engineering Math, or STEM, family night. Thanks to the school's partnerships with UW-Oshkosh College of Education faculty and students, Jefferson's families were able to explore engineering concepts and design different problem-solving devices and structures. Shapiro STEM Academy would like to thank Generac Power Systems for their generous donation of time and funds. A Generac engineer recently visited the fourth graders and shared his passion for the field. And in celebration of the company's 60th anniversary, they donated herd tickets to Shapiro families and donated $5,000 to Shapiro to support their STEM learning. Thank you, Generac Power Systems. Vincent Behrendt, an eighth grader at South Park Middle School, was chosen as this year's Oshkosh Chamber Essay Contest winner for having the best essay in his technology and engineering class. Congratulations, Vincent. Ally Picor, a junior at Oshkosh North, recently placed 15th in the 500 Freestyle at the State Swim Meet. This was Ally's second appearance at state swimming, and this year she achieved a personal best time. Congratulations, Ally. Last year, Washington Elementary School received a new dragon logo made by Art City Wraps. This year, the school decided to let students help name the Washington Dragon. Each grade submitted a name, and the entire Washington school community was encouraged to vote for their favorite name. After all the votes were in, the winner was blue. Congratulations to the Washington kindergartners for suggesting the name. Fourth graders at Webster Stanley Elementary are learning about the American Revolution. They recently took part in a hands-on learning activity featuring a crime scene from the Boston Massacre. After evidence was gathered, students had to come to a consensus and present their case to the rest of the class. They were also able to use skills they learned from the Oshkosh Police Department's recent demonstration on how to back up their claims with evidence and reasoning.
So did I ever come up with the verdict?
That's a good question. I don't know which one. Ninth graders in the communities at Oshkosh North High School program recently supported the city of Oshkosh by helping put up holiday lights for the annual celebration of lights. The students helped by wrapping lights around trees to eliminate the roads for the passerby's as they enjoyed the scenery for this holiday season. Elementary social study pilot teachers are gathering with community organizations to build units of study that align with the recently adopted Wisconsin State Social Studies standards. The team is collaborating with the UW-Madison Cooperative Children's Book Center and our very own Oshkosh Public Museum to provide quality resources for our students. Schools throughout the Oshkosh Area School District recently held numerous celebrations and activities to recognize and celebrate Veterans Day. For example, Carl Traeger Elementary held its fourth annual Veterans Day celebration and paid tribute to nearly 50 veterans. The school community also raised $1,000 to send two more veterans on honor flights. We are extremely grateful for the work that is completed by our schools and ensuring that our students understand and value what Veterans Day actually means. And as always, I'm, oh, as superintendent, I'm committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout Oshkosh. On the screen, you'll see where I've been spending my time for the past couple of weeks.
And I noticed, Dr. Kurt, right, that that list is so long that the font had to be made smaller in order to fit everything onto one slide.
Well, I'm committed to ensuring that community is aware of where I am attending, more specifically for their school site visits.
Absolutely.
Some of those are multiple site, you know, multiple, multiple visits to the same school. But it's essential, I just want people to know that, yes, every month, I'm in every school at least once. It's usually more, but at least once.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. Moving on, we, do we have any district administrator supplemental reports?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay.
We're going to first let him come up, Dr. Brown, to talk about, for our, a brief report for our last listening session.
Excellent, okay.
All right, thank you. Yes, at our last listening session, we did have one individual who came up who wanted to discuss concerns about the ability for schools to handle students who have dyslexia. And we did share at that time some of the things that we are implementing right now for our students with dyslexia, and we also shared some information about our phonics program at that time as well. We also had an individual who came up who wanted to talk about the importance of a meeting that already happened, but it was a meeting around behaviors with our students. And so we assured that we would be meeting the next day to discuss some of the issues and some of the strategies that we have. So those were the two. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Appreciate your report. Next, we have a Facility Advisory Committee update with Dr. Gunlock.
If it's permissible, I'm going to go ahead and provide that report for you.
That would be excellent, Dr. Kurt, right?
Thank you.
All right.
So with the Facility Advisory Committee update, this is going to be a briefer update since we are doing a full report coming to you on December the 4th. The Facility Advisory Committee is still in the stages of finalizing their recommendations to you. So just, just a reminder of where the charge was from the board to our, our committee charge, and it was basically seeking those recommendations to address our district facility needs. They were charged to review all pertinent information regarding our facilities based on the outcomes of our recently completed assessment of our facilities. Specifically, there were three charges. The first, to look at proposed options, renovations, upgrades that support learning environments which are safe, accessible, efficient, and equitable. Purposeful spaces, spaces that inspire innovative learning, accommodate evolving technology, and promote collaboration among students, staff, parents, and the community within three to four track elementary, meaning three to four sections of kindergarten, three to four sections of first grade, second, so on and so forth, and eight to 10 track middle schools, similar concepts. The suggested recommendation shall maximize use, reuse, and a replacement of existing facilities and shall be cost-effective for the taxpayer, providing for an enduring end product that is energy-efficient and adaptable for decades to come. This was our, November 11th was the last meeting. It was held at West High School. We did have one community member that joined us for that meeting. Of course, our community is more than welcomed at any point in time if they want to go in and watch any of those meetings or want to gather additional information. We do have this posted on our website under District, and then it says, "For Facility Advisory Committee." And then, once you click on that, you can obtain copies of all materials that were provided, as well as videos that were provided for meetings two through six. So highlights, it was a recap of the process, our meeting schedule and norms, reviewed some of those internal themes from the community survey. They also started the review process to finalize the FAC report to the school board itself. And then, of course, our closure, exit slips, and next steps. So what's happening next is they are in process right now of finalizing that report. So what's happening next is they're in process right now of finalizing that report. As soon as it is finalized, we will be posting it to the website, and we'll having our board workshop for the discussion of that report, as well as the community survey results on December the 4th, and then for the board to have a discussion of consideration of next steps. And that is it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kurt Wright. Are there board committee reports tonight? Mrs. Olmsted.
Policy and Governance Committee met on Monday, the 18th, and we had 18 policies we went through and revised. They will all be coming to the board for approval on December 18th meeting. I'll go quickly through them, just so you know what they are. The first one was policy for the oath, for us to take the policy. Now clarify some of the procedures for administering the oath to the board members and the timing for the oath and the appointed members who will take office at different times during the year. A statute reference was added to that also for the legal reference section. We also changed the policy for notice of regular meetings to note for, the title of policy was changed to the notice of regular meetings, and the reference to the official newspaper has been clarified to be consistent with the state statute. Then we also had the title change of meeting was changed to meeting minutes, and the options for distribution of meeting proceedings and meeting minutes content were clarified. The committee requested the following additional changes, language from the template from the clerk or temporary clerk appointed by the president, that they are the one to, for the secretary. Then we also had Policy 3111, creating a position. There are revisions in this policy include removing and replacing and setting salary and wages based on the collective bargaining agreement with reference to other sources of wage determination, removing a reference to U.S. citizens to avoid the appearance, the appearance of U.S. citizen hiring preference, which is the district is not permitted to have, and eliminating the option to verify and authorize employee of all new hires as that is required and not an option. 4111, creating, it's the same one, just for the other staff members. Policy 4132 for vacancies. Also references to collective bargaining agreements removed from this policy that hadn't been done before. The policy 9600, staff-student participation in community events. Reference to an administration guideline was removed from this policy because we do not have a guideline for that policy. The committee requested that the following, we changed some words to an "and." It just says in here that we changed one of the words. Policy 5830, student fundraising. This policy was revised to incorporate DPI's determination of student fundraising activities with, to federal law. The committee does not want to elect the changes, but requests that the USDA guideline be added. So, we added the law underneath there also. 6152, student fees, fines, and charges. The revision to this policy placed additional control on the collection and accounting of money to provide more protection against fraud or losing funds. Policy 6470, payment of invoices. This revisions to this policy address the process of paying invoices, and the use of electronic means of paying invoices, so we added electronic payment in there also. The committee recommended that we do that. 6510, payroll authorization. This policy is revised to remove reference to collective bargaining agreements again. Policy 6610, student activity funds. Revisions made to this policy reference regulations and restrictions of the handling of these funds. Policy 6630, cash handling and deposits. This is a new, a new policy that was brought in. This new policy governs the handling of cash received and how it is stored. Language is included on the retaining sufficient documentation to audit and verify the proper handling of the money. So we had brought that in. A lot of students will pay things at school with cash, so there was not, we put a policy in on how to handle that. Policy 6830, audit. The revision to this policy reflects the Section 120.14 Wisconsin State Statute, and the PI 14 does not require a board to approve the audit. The auditor submits its report to the board and DPI. The board minutes may reflect that the board has received or discussed the audit, but the board does not approve it or disapprove of an audit. So we had to re-language that. Policy 7300, disposition of real property. This policy was revised to create separate policies regarding real and personal property. So then we also changed 7310, which is the personal property, gave better definitions of both of them. 7455, accounting of fixed assets. The policy is revised to incorporate reference to Policy 7300, helping with the real property and the personal property. And then 8660, transportation of private vehicles. Policy revisions reflect the statutory language about transporting of students using vehicles that are not classified as school buses. So we redid those words according to state statute. Future meetings will be, our next meeting is December 9th, which we have another big line of them, and I think those also will be going through, and we'll be doing all of these and all of the new ones on our December 18th board meeting.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Olmsted. A very busy committee.
Yeah. Okay, are there other committee reports?
I also have one, yes. So the Education Committee met on Thursday, November 7th, and we had a very lively and detailed discussion about several things, so I'll try to summarize those. First, we had some school psychologists with us, and they were there to give us some information about what they do, their role in the schools. It was Jess Scanlon, Tim Bonson, and Katie Kaspuski, and here are some of the things they highlighted. They said that they are responsible for evaluating children to determine if they qualify for special education services. They consult with teachers on economic and social issues. They connect families with community resources. They work with behavioral issues, school climate issues. They analyze data for intervention effectiveness, and of course, that's just a brief list of some of the things they do. The following week, which was actually last week, November 11th through 15th, was actually National School of Psychologists Week. So they also talked about how their national theme is fighting your focus and the importance of each of them finding something they were passionate about to add to our school district. There are nine psychologists working in our school district. They compose eight full-time positions, so each psychologist serves about 1,250 students, and the national recommendation is 500 to 700 students, so they're doing about double. Next, we talked about data accountability and school report cards. We just took kind of a deeper dive from what we discussed at our last school board meeting. We talked about iReady and how it is aligned to the Wisconsin model for academic standards. This doesn't mean that it's necessarily correlated to forward testing, which is the Wisconsin mandated test. Talked about the district showed upward trends in the ACTS Spire, which is the ninth and 10th graders, and that the ELA profession status is also on an upward trend since 2015-16. So those were some things we were excited about. We went over a list of what all the assessments are at each grade level and talked about how the iReady was something we just implemented this year, and based on students' results with iReady, there's a determination as to what other tests they might continue to take or they might even be able to skip if they depend on the results in iReady. And we also found out iReady replaced the end-of-the-year math assessments. So that was kind of just getting into our conversation of how much time kids are working on these assessments. And then the final thing on our list, like I said, it was a lively discussion, was an update on the new phonics program and the Sonde program, and that was presented by Dr. Kim Brown. She said the literacy teachers are working with the third through fifth grade students to fill in the gaps because the units of study that we adopted is for kindergarten through second grade, and the students in third through fifth grade did not get that kind of separate phonics instruction. And they did have phonics instruction, but we just see a need to backfill and checking their assessments to determine what areas they're lacking and fill them in with some extra stuff. iReady also helps school psychologists in their assessments of students by being able to identify the students' needs and being able to see the current levels of students without spending time on additional testing. So the school psychologist chipped in in this Section 2 and talked a bit about how these assessments are helping them. And then Dr. Brown gave us an update about the Sonde system. Their System 1 offers a structured system of reading intervention for beginning readers, so it would be people, students who are reading through the second-grade reading level, with each lesson plan using Orton-Gillingham methods to provide effective intervention in small group settings. And Sonde System 2 offers a structured system of reading intervention for intermediate readers, so third through eighth grade reading level, where each lesson plan uses Orton-Gillingham methods to provide effective intervention in small group setting, and we're continuing to roll that out and offer that to more and more students. And Dr. Brown, we ended that we are hearing very positive feedback about these phonics programs, both enthusiasm from students and teachers. Our next meeting will be Thursday, December 5th, and we are going to go over the social studies. We just adopted some standards and curriculum update for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Selagi. Are there any other committee reports tonight? I believe Facilities and Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow morning, is that correct?
Uh huh.
Okay, so we'll have an update at the December meeting for that, A-December meeting for that. Okay, did I miss any other reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the non-agenda-related public forum. There was no one who signed up for that. We only have one person who signed up for the next agenda item, which is the agenda-related public forum, and that would be Mr. Tim Hess. I would just ask you, Mr. Hess, to clearly state your name and address and the topic you wish to address. If you're acting as spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. State clearly and concisely the matters of concern, and limit your comments to the allotted time of three minutes for you to present. Please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. Mr. Hess.
Wonderful, thank you. My name is Tim Hess. I live at 2645 Templeton Place here in Oshkosh. I represent the same crew that I represented last time, myself, Andy Dunkey, Kel Schultz, and Chet Weisenberg. I'm here to talk just a little bit about the Smith School bid. Again, update you a little bit about what we've done since last time. You know, thank you for giving us the opportunity to rethink things. We used that time to do a little more research into the building and finding out that it's not really just William Waters, but it's William Waters, it's Henry Aller did the addition to it, and that's historic preservation gold, to be quite honest. So what that allowed us to do was to approach the State Historical Society and document all of this stuff that we put together, and we got a letter yesterday from them saying it's their opinion that this would easily qualify for the state and national register for historic places. So again, that's our intent of what we want to do with this building. Finding that out and not having to pay a historic preservation consultant made it where we could offer a little bit more. I appreciate, maybe you guys would want a little more than what we're offering, but I hope, knowing that we're going to take care of that building and retain that legacy, is something that you guys will all appreciate too. And so I hope that you guys will consider awarding us the project, and we'll try to keep it in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Next, we will move on to the Consent Resolution Agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. At this point, we have 7B that will be pulled. Are there any others that you would like pulled? Okay, if not, then the board will consider approval of 1, Minutes of October 23rd, 2019 Special Board Meeting; 2, Minutes of October 23rd, 2019 Regular Board Meeting; 3, Minutes of October 23rd, 2019 Executive Session of Regular Board Meeting; Number 4, Minutes of October 30th, 2019 Special Board Meeting; Number 5, Minutes of November 6th, 2019 Regular Board Meeting; Number 6, Bills Payable; Number 7, Personnel, A, Appointments, Temporary Appointment, Resignations, and Salaries.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Crystal?
Aye.
Crystal, aye, Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye, Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye, Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye, Gerzog?
Aye.
Gerzog, aye, Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye, Motion Period.
Thank you very much. Resolution 7B, be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve the retirements as filed with the secretary to the board of education.
So moved.
Second. I had asked that this one be pulled in order that we could recognize the five individuals who are seeking to retire from the school district. I told at least one of them that it was not an automatic when they submitted. It does have to be voted on by the board, and she laughed just as all of you did. Jean Carney is currently an ID teacher assistant at South Park Middle School, and she will be retiring in January of 2020. She's been employed with the district since 1998, so in other words, roughly 21 years. Dale Grassi is a cook helper currently at Reed Elementary School, actually already is retired, and has been with the district since 2008, so roughly 11 years. Deborah Kramer has been a media teacher assistant at Oshkosh West High School since 1989, so she's retiring after 30 years of service to the district. The West Media Center is not going to be the same, and Deb will be retiring in January of 2020. She has also been a great support of the sister school exchange program that we have with Germany, where we send students over and they send students back. Pat Nichols, Office Technical, Perry Tipler Middle School, is retiring in December, and she has been with the district since 1990, so again, roughly 29 years of service. And finally, Teresa Sell, School Secretary at Roosevelt Elementary School. She is retiring also in January. She's been with the district since 1989, which translates to roughly 30 years. So I just want to thank all of these individuals for their dedicated service to the children and staff and community for many years of unwavering support and service of our district, and wish them all the best in retirement. Any other comments, questions? All right, with that, please call the roll.
Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye, Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye, Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye, Gerzog?
Aye.
Gerzog, aye, Olmsted?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Crystal, aye, Motion Period.
Hopefully, we'll see all of these individuals at the retirement dinner next June. It seems a long way out, and it is. Are there individual considered resolutions, individually considered resolutions tonight? Future agenda items? Announcements? I just wanted to announce how wonderful it was and how special it was tonight to have the representative, Adam from Spectrum News here tonight, along with their camera crews and Senator Fine, to help us with those two special awards for student athlete Deb, excuse me, Danielle Lively, the daughter of Deb, and Sean Lively, and also the Whispera Award on behalf of the school district, which Katie Niemann has worked so diligently on. Spectrum has announced that these rebroadcasts will be available on Wednesday, November 27th, and all day on Thanksgiving Day, November 28th. So if you wanted to take a look at those videos, you have the opportunity to do that. Are there any other announcements? All right, we will then be looking to adjourn to executive session. In executive session, we would be, one, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin Statute 95.8, excuse me, 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, a Smith Elementary School bids. And two, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where Paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. A parental complaint.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye, Evans?
Aye.
of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations. A parental complaint. So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Gerzog?
Aye.
Gerzog, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Petal?
Aye.
Petal, aye. Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn to executive session, and upon completion of executive session, we will be reconvening in this room in open session. We are adjourned at this time. Are we moving?
The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org.
We are back into open session, following our conclusion of executive session, and we have one individually considered resolution at this time. As soon as I locate my paper on that. Jim's got one. Here it is. Thank you. We are considering an individual resolution, and this would be to approve the bid for the sale of Smith Elementary School. So we will need a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve to Kel Schultz, Andy Dunkey, Chet Wiesenberg, and Tim Hess for the amount of $400,000 for the purchase of Smith School.
Second. Is there any further discussion?
I just am excited to see what they do with that property. I think they're, it's a good fit, and I think it should be, I'd like to see what they do with it.
I appreciate their commitment to preserving the historical heritage of that building. We have to read all of it before we vote on it.
Mr. Evans, can you read the whole?
Certainly, I'll read the whole resolution.
No, well, she's still discussing.
I was just discussing. Okay. No problem.
Sorry, Barb.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm sorry.
All right. I have to reread this for us to vote on it? I thought we had a motion and a second.
Right, but it never, the intention of the resolution never was read.
Right. Oh.
There's more to the resolution than just putting in those names and approving.
I think we need to, you need to read the entire resolution.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh area School District Board of Education approve the sale of the Smith Elementary School building to Kel Schultz, Andy Dunkey, Chet Wiesenberg, and Tim Hess for $400,000. Be it further resolved that Sue Schnorr, Executive Director of Business Services, is hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents related to the sale of property as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education in accordance with the rules, regulations, and policies of the Board of Education.
We already have the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Would you like to finish?
I'm finished. But thank you for asking. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Gerzog?
Aye.
Gerzog, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Petal?
Aye.
Petal, aye. Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried.
We are adjourned.
Let me know if I got the second on that one.